I'd like you to welcome you to the tonight's zoning board of adjustment meeting. Today's date is September 26, 2023. I am JP Boucher. I'll be acting as your chair this evening. This evening, the meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of the Nashville City Hall at 229 Main Street and by Zoom at the link posted in the public meeting agendas. Attendance by telephone is also available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashvilleNewHampshire.gov Agenda Center. Select zoning board of adjustment. If anybody has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3056, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access this meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The board follows the meeting protocols, procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are any questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer is used to manage speaking time. Kate Poirier, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time is expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raised hand option, which you can be found under reactions on a computer or the more menu on a phone. The chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your question comments. Please mute your microphone until called on to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we'll be hearing only requests for variances. So I'll just go over what a variance is. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances are also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions, which we don't have any on the schedule tonight. Per the city and Nashville bylaws, the state of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has a right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the city and Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of the decision. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Contact Mr. Fark and the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following board members in attendance here at the auditorium: myself, JP Boucher, Mr. Steve Lionel, and Mr. Josh Neely. On Zoom, we have Mr. Jay Minkara and Ms. Estafia Boris. In addition, also here in the audience, we have Mr. Carter Fark, our Planning Department manager, and Ms. Kate Poirier, the department coordinator. So we're going to start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. For board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right to know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. Mr. Neely?
Present.
Mr. Lionel?
Present.
Mr. Boucher is present. Mr. Minkara?
Present. I am attending remotely today due to illness. I have a cold I'd rather not share, and I am alone in the room.
Ms. Boris?
Ms. Boris is working remotely due to my work requirements of not being late coming into the city hall. I am home alone.
Thank you. So tonight, the full board members present in the auditorium is myself and Mr. Lionel. Mr. Neely is an alternate member. Those board members who are attending remotely can participate in all the discussion but cannot will not be able to vote. So they'll be able to participate both in our public meeting and in the public meeting. And so tonight, if any one of us recuse ourselves here in the auditorium, then that case will have to be held over. So just wanted to be clear what was going to happen there. Mr. Fark, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are none.
Does anybody have any questions before I get started? Okay, seeing none. Going to read the first case. I'm going to open the public hearing for case number one, which is for Benjamin E. Mason, owner of 6 Greenley Street, Sheet 138, Lot 4, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-17, Section E, Subsection 1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 45 feet existing, requesting to maintain an additional 21 feet of recently added driveway width. It's in the R9 Zone, Ward 1. Please step up to the mic. You have to speak into the mic, sir, and then you're going to see your name and address for the record, please.
Benjamin Mason, 6 Greenley Street, Nashua. All right, so I bought my house in 2000. If you want, I'll give you a quick rundown. Driveway was only 12 feet wide. Everything was overgrown, so I'm an excavator operator. I went in there, cleaned everything out, leveled it out. I had a trailer at the time because I was moving, so I created this side spot. It was just gravel millings at the time. I ripped everything out. So I needed a spot to put my trailer off to the side. So anyhow, I gravelled it all, had no intentions of paving it. It went two years without paving. It was just recycled asphalt, millings. Since then, got rid of the trailer. I put up a fence. It's nice. It hides my trash barrel, keeps the recycling. I don't have a garage, the snow tires go behind that. You know, I try to keep it, you know, clean. Since the trailer's been gone, I find my wife uses it to turn around. If you know Greenley Street, it's Upper Broad Street. It's the first left of Upper Broad Street. Lincoln Park's the end of the road, the ball field. And people turn that corner on two wheels, whether they're going to Hollis and don't want to sit in Hollis traffic, or there's like 500 homes in that development from my house down to Nashua North. It's just, people fly down my road. It's just insane, both ways, either they go away from work or whatever. Me, I don't mind. I back out, but her, she likes it. I got a daughter who's 15, and she's getting, you know, licensed, what, eight months? So it's kind of a safety issue, more so for her. If you were there for a minute and saw how fast people come down, and you could say just back up into the driveway, but every time I turn down my road, there's five cars behind me, you know, just because there's so many homes and it's the first left. It's just overwhelming with traffic. So I don't know really what else to say, other than it's just a safety issue to have it there. It keeps the barrels, you know, it's clean, it looks good. I had no intent having it done. Having it paved was kind of a fluke. My boss, I owe him a favor. My boss owed me money, so he's like, you want it to pave it? I'm like, okay. So I got put on a pavement plan, and so that's kind of where it was. It was like gravel for two years, and I think it was paved in November, and I want to say December 16th, I got a letter for, no, non-compliance. So I guess that's all I got. I really don't know.
Are there any questions, Mr. Lionel?
Okay, first of all, I just want to mention that whether it's paved or not, the city considers it a driveway within the right of way from the road. When you received the first letter from the city in January, at least it's dated in January, what was your response?
I was shocked, honestly. I didn't know I did anything wrong. I really didn't. I had no idea. I thought I was actually cleaning up the neighborhood. All my neighbors thanked me because the people who lived there before me just let the place deteriorate.
Well, my question was, you know, the letter told you what to do. Did you do any of those things?
The letter just told me.
The letter told you to contact the community development and apply for a variance?
Yes, I did that. It took me a while. I live week to week. I don't have a lot of money. For 350 bucks, I did kind of get a personal loan just to pull some money out of that.
You got a second letter in April or May?
Yes, I've been in contact with her and, oh, I can't remember his name. Carter? Yeah, Carter, through this whole deal. It's like I said, it was just trying to get up the money to give you guys the 350 bucks. So it's a week to week.
Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Neely?
On the, excuse me, the south end of your property, it looks pretty overgrown going up right up there. Is that your, is that your property or is that your neighbor's?
No, it's my neighbor's. His yacht doesn't look good either. I'd say I cut it back, but it's just, his yacht looks like crap.
No, I understand. So you feel like that overgrown area, that's really the safety concern, is you can't see around that as you're trying to get out?
You really can't see. In the wintertime, it's not as bad, but summertime when it's overgrown, it's, like I said, the speed that people come down my road is just insane.
And when I took a look at the pictures, one of the satellite photos looked like there was a boat in the driveway. Was that a boat or is that the trailer you're talking about?
That's the old home. That was a Zillow photo.
Yeah.
Prior to me buying it, the whole yacht was a mess as you could see. It's a disaster.
Okay, thank you.
Any members on Zoom have any questions? Mr. Minkara?
If I could ask you a question of staff, I might have missed it somewhere, but what is the front setback in this area?
20 feet. And I believe I'm 13 feet to the fence. I believe one of my neighbors sent an email to you guys too, saying that everyone should ever turn around with the amount of traffic. I have another photo if you guys like to see it, when it was with the gravel millings, prior to paving. I thought it was just the asphalt was the issue. I didn't know it was. That's the trailer I had.
Are you all set on the members? Nobody else? Okay. All set? Okay. All right, you can sit down for now. Thank you. Does anybody in the audience have any, would like to come up and speak in favor of this Any? We have one letter here in favor of this application. It's from Matthew Espinola. I live at 3 Greenley Street and have read the letter and think it should be approved because the 45 foot looks like to me it is for him to back into so he can get out of his driveway of the road. It says 25 miles per hour, but people do 45 on the road. So I think everyone's driveway should be allowed to have a turnaround so they aren't backing into the road. So yes, he should be able to do what he likes on this law and it's not interfering with anyone. Is anybody in the audience like to speak in opposition of this application? Okay, seeing none? Anybody on Zoom with opposition? Or in favor? No, okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely?
I think he brought up a good point about the safety issue there, which is why I brought up the overgrown areas to the south of his driveway. I will tell you, having driven by there doing a site visit, as he testified too, just as I sat there for five minutes, two cars went by me at a relatively high rate of speed, probably double the speed limit. You know, normally, I'm not one of the folks who is in favor of the wider driveways. I do think he did a good job putting up that fence. I actually think it beautified that area, does a good job blocking what's behind there. I did have concerns if maybe that was just for boat parking, which is why I did ask that question. And we do have the one neighbor that spoke in favor of this, so for those reasons, I am in favor of this application.
Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, I'm usually very skeptical of these applications, especially when they're after the fact. Mr. Mason didn't build this extension as a safety feature. He built it for storing trailers. But, you know, and now the safety feature is sort of a retroactive explanation for what it's for. Personally, I didn't see people racing down the street, but I'll accept that people do. Yeah, it looks okay with the fence there, but I have to really struggle to convince myself that, to accept this. So I'm looking to see what other people say.
Mr. Minkara?
Well, I struggle to find support for this. I do appreciate the safety concern that was raised and just note the comment. You know, in the letter that we received, everybody should be able to do this. Well, perhaps, but the zoning doesn't permit everybody to do this. You know, I struggle to find support for two reasons. One, I don't see anything that distinguishes this property really from any other property in the surrounding area. And secondly, it is possible, would have been possible, if this had not been enough to the fact, I would have said, well, you can create that turnaround and not infringe on the setback. You could move that turnaround nine feet back. There's plenty of room to do it, and you don't meet the requirements of the ordinance. So I see no physical impediment that would prevent you from doing that. So for that reason, I can't find support.
Thank you. Ms. Boris?
I'm actually in support of the application for all that's been stated by my other colleagues, and especially regarding the safety issue, the speed on that road. I think that we'd be doing a justice to allow them to keep it as is. So I am in support of the application.
I think obviously if the applicant hadn't known, I think the applicant would have put the turnaround a little further back. I don't have really any opposition to the application as far as I don't know or I don't see at this point what, if, I don't know if the harm or the value of removing the driveway is actually, would actually benefit the public at this point. So, you know, unfortunately, it's there. I think there was a good effort to at least put a blind up for it. I, you know, again, I was there a couple of times. I saw one car probably going way too fast, but I can't speak to the safety issue. So I would probably at this point be in favor of the application. So with that, we can try, take a vote. We always need three affirmative votes, so we can try, if somebody wants to make a motion for either denial or acceptance, we can try that first and then see where we get to there.
I would like to make a motion to approve the variance for Benjamin E. Mason, owner of 6 Greenley Street, Sheet 138, Lot 4, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-17, Subsection E, Subsection 1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 45 feet existing, requesting to maintain an additional 21 feet of recently added driveway width in the R9 Zone, Ward 1. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board has discussed and has had spirited discussion about whether this is a safety issue. There is overgrown property just to the south of the applicant's property, which can block the applicant and his family and others from safely entering and exiting the driveway. There has been some discussion that there is excessive speed on that road as well. There's about 500 homes in the neighborhood, so many folks use this road as a cut through. We do have some neighbors that have spoken in favor of this applicant continuing to have the larger driveway with a nice fence blocking the driveway. We do feel that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This will not adversely affect the property value of the surrounding parcels. It is not contrary to popular interest, and substantial justice will be taken into account here. So for those reasons, I make a motion to approve the variance.
And I'll second that. Any discussion? Mr. Neely?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor. Congratulations, your application has been approved. Just be aware that there's still a 30-day window of appeal, that somebody could appeal this. Other than that, you're all set. Thanks for coming. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number one.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good night. I'll open the public hearing for case number two. This is for Alex William and Gabrielle Teresa Park, owners of 65 Underhill Street, Sheet 14, Lot 466, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum land area, 8,182 square feet existing, 18,669 square feet required to maintain a dwelling unit above a detached garage, it's in the RB Zone, Ward 7. Welcome. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Alex Park.
Gabriella Park.
65 Underhill Street. We purchased this property recently under the impression that it was a legal three-family. To our knowledge, the third unit above the garage has been occupied for the past 20-plus years. The apartment was not left in good condition. Our goal is to be able to use this unit after we fully renovate and bring it up to current standards and codes. We are newly married. This is our first home. We're planning to start a family. We're going to take good care of the property and all its occupants. Also, looked into or tried to find other three-family properties in Nashua with the square footage required, and there are very few in the city. I'm sure they're all grandfathered in, but this structure has been here since the 80s. It's not something we built, and I don't think it would hurt anybody but us by not allowing us to use it as a third unit.
Is that it? Any questions, Mr. Neely?
How long ago did you purchase this?
We closed on June 30th.
And your realtor didn't find out any of this information? That was an illegal apartment?
Apparently not. I looked into it a little bit after we purchased the property, and the tax assessor's office, if you call them, they tell you it's a three-family, but they also tell you that they are not the legal side of it. They tell you the call planning is open. So obviously, once we filed for permits, planning and zoning told us that they had no record of a third unit. So they obviously didn't look into it more than, you know, they should have looked.
So I'm sure you know that there's been some correspondence from some neighbors who are not in favor of this. I know the board has all read this stuff. I'm sure we've all done drive-bys, and part of what was brought up was, you know, it's overgrown, there could be some vermin going on, and I know you guys are working on it. What's the plan for the property? What, you know, what can you tell your neighbors right now under, you know, as you testify of how the property is going to look when you're done to make them feel better? You have a very nice neighborhood, and these folks basically are saying, we want this to be, you know, a good spot for our families to grow up around this house. Please tell us what you're going to do to make that better.
So the previous owner, before the previous owner, had passed away, and the daughter took over the property, and that's, she didn't obviously keep up with the property as well as she should, and that's why it's overgrown, five, six years of brush and trees that weren't intended to. What I would like to do is clear all that out. It's going to be expensive, and hopefully, pave that, it'd be another 10-plus foot of driveway space, so there'll be no cars parking the street. There'll be plenty of driveway parking, and then plan on painting the house and the garage to make it more appealing, because obviously, the spotted green isn't very attractive at the moment. We already have made some minor improvements to the landscape. We took out a bunch of bushes in the front that were covering the whole front of the house. That was just the quick stuff that we could do without costing us too much money, because we're currently renovating the first floor of the property, so we can move in as soon as possible, because we're renting right now. So we're trying to focus on the first floor at the moment to try and get moved in, and then we will deal with the property appeal after we're moved in or in the process of moving in to the property. But we're willing to make any changes safety-wise or code-wise to the structure that we need to in order to get it occupied.
So it looks like from the application, you're looking to build or renovate the studio apartment above the garage? Is that an active garage, like you guys parking cars? Is there a plan to park cars in there? Is it like a workshop garage? Like what is it underneath there?
The plan is to park vehicles in it.
Okay. And so when this, when everything is done, you know, considering if this goes through, you're going to have enough room for at least six cars in the driveway, because figure a three-family, two-car, right? It's going to be off the road. You're going to beautify the property. Everything's going to be up to code. Is that basically what you guys are telling us tonight?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay. Anybody in the audience like to speak in opposition with the application? Come on up. Just give us your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Greney. I live at 64 Underhill Street. I am the individual that's been communicating with the board. I hate to be that guy, and I appreciate the expense that home cost them, but the, it's my understanding that this variance is to legitimize a longstanding structure in use. My position is this is a hardship, not created by the petitioner. Evidently, it was represented to him or his family in a way that was not accurate. Due diligence wasn't done, so now we're in a situation where it's a hardship, I grant you that, but it's a self-created hardship. My concerns with the occupied unit above is it is and has been an illegal apartment. There's no question about that. People die in those type of apartments. I have grave concerns about the safety of that structure. I don't know how you can make it safe without coming before the board again for another variance. I have concerns about that. A decrease in property value is not a hardship, in my opinion. It's financial. I don't think that gets you over the bar for a variance approval. You know, if this was a situation where there was an established family and there was a growing family and you needed room for children or a sick family member or an in-law apartment, fine, I would not be here. I wouldn't be here for a home office above that garage. My concern, again, number one is safety, and I'm not sure how you could ever make that property a second regress up there. They have owned the property for months now. My pictures will show that it's not kept up. You need to get rid of the debris. You know, loss of rental income is financial. I don't see that getting anyone over the bar. I think you might set a bad precedence where you- I think you might set a bad precedence where you might have homeowner owners and business owners coming in seeking variances for more income, or rental income, or an income stream. And lastly, I had communication this morning with William McKenney, I believe, from the Building Department. There was work going on over there on Sunday, I believe, or Saturday? I think it was Saturday. I'm staying correct, it's Saturday. Unpermitted work on the second floor. Mini splits being put in. Permits were not pulled for that. So I have concerns moving forward that things aren't going to be done above board. Allegedly, somebody from the Building Department was going to go over there today to look into that issue. I don't know what ever happened. Again, I don't want to be that guy, but I'm here. I am very concerned about any tenants that might have to move into that apartment. Thank you very much.
Hold on, sorry. Any questions for that? Any questions? Sir, just curious, how long have you lived in that location?
I bought that house in 2018, March of 2018.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak with questions or opposition to the application? Seeing none. Sir, you have five minutes if you'd like to come up and rebut anything that the gentleman in opposition had to say. So you have five minutes if you want to come back up. If not, you can stay seated. That's up to you. So just your name and address again for the record.
Alex Park, 65 Underhill Street. Just a couple other things that he stated. Our plan was to move a family member up into that studio for a cheaper living. So like I said, we're going to make any safety improvements that we need to. We're not just putting some stranger up there. If we wanted to do that, we wouldn't have pulled permit in the first place. We could have just thrown somebody up there and called it a day, and you guys wouldn't have batted an eye. And that would have been that, and we could have went on. And as far as the other thing, that's not what we're here for, but my tenant needs heat. So I'm going to do what I have to do to get them heat starting to get cold. I had to wait two months almost for the building permit for the first floor, so can't really wait two months in this situation. If I need to correct that afterwards, that is fine. That's really all I got.
Okay. Thank you. We all done? One more time, right? Sir, now you have an opportunity to come up for five more minutes if you'd like. If not, you can stay.
Again, Arthur Granier, 64 Underhill in Nashua. With the correspondence that I provided to the board, this home was purchased later June, beginning of July. It's now September 26th. Most people have a home inspection. Again, any heat issues, permits to be pulled, things of that sort should have been done long ago. That's all I have to say to that. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Lionel?
Yeah. Okay. Safety issues are not our concern in terms of the work that the parks would need to do to make a safe apartment for that. So, you know, assuming that they were going to continue the path that they've been on to turn that into a legal apartment, they would have to meet all of the requirements of the Fire Marshal and the other city codes. So I'm not going to discuss that. And it is unfortunate, and I've seen it before, that people buy a house that has been misrepresented to them, and there's not a lot of recourse available. Whether they want to create this apartment for rental, I heard about a tenant, maybe the tenant, since it's already a two-unit thing, there must be a tenant in the main building. Is that correct? Yeah, okay. Anyway, really, it's just the land use that we would be considering, and we've had many cases like that before. So I'm sort of on the fence of it, but I can't find right now a really strong reason to deny it. But I'm interested in what my colleagues have to say.
I hear what the opposition had to say. I think, again, the process that we understand what's going to have to happen, that whole, if we were to approve this, that whole structure is going to have to go out of the code, right? So for safety, for cars being parked in there, fire risk. So I have every confidence that if they were to move forward, that that would have to be done, or they, you know, and it would be their choice whether or not they want to follow through with that. I understand that it's been an illegal apartment, and it's been like that for a long time. I understand the condition of the property. I honestly believe that the applicant has sincere thoughts about wanting to improve this property. I think that we would all like to see it done like yesterday, but I think, again, you know, being reasonable and trying to understand what the applicant wants to do. The usage, I think, is not out of the ordinary for this area, you know, for the city. I think we've seen things like this before. So I think that I'm falling on the side of support for this application. That's it. Mr. Neely?
I do applaud them working to bring this into code. I think this is a big deal. You know, we've heard some testimony that somebody has been living in this illegal apartment since the 80s. That's a long time. You, they certainly are, hopefully, hearing their neighbors are not happy with the condition now, and I'll be honest, they need to move quickly on this to get their neighbors behind them. This type of overgrown material and doing construction without permits is just not going to cut it. You can tell that, you know, the neighborhood is just not going to put up with that. That being said, we have spoken how the code enforcement is going to come back to primarily the Fire Department. That's a big code issue brought up by Mr. Granier. You know, the applicant has testified that up to six cars will be in the driveway out of the, off the street, off-street parking. He is working to take this property to a higher level. From everything I'm hearing, the state is, you know, many areas around the state are talking about how do we add housing? How do we add in ADUs? This is non-ADU. But in the current atmosphere, I find it difficult to take away a unit of housing. And it's not for financial reasons for these folks, but just because we need housing in Nashua. This has been here since the 80s. They're going to need to put some money in to bring it up to code, but I actually think this, you know, is potentially a nice little apartment for somebody to live in. It's not, while most of the neighborhood is single-family houses, when I did a drive-by, this doesn't stick out as an eyesore beyond the overgrown, like the garage is there. Obviously, it was built higher. So I believe I'm in support of this application, but, you know, I think we've all put on record that the applicant needs to know that, you know, there's going to be a lot of code enforcement here, and they've got to win the neighbors over fast. And there's a very small window to get this done.
Thank you. Ms. Boris?
I'm also in support of the application, based on what my colleague just stated, and due to the fact that we do have a shortage of housing, and I think that that would be positive, as long as they do keep this house up and satisfy their neighbor with all the concerns they have.
Thank you. Mr. McCarroll?
I'm struggling with this one. When I look at what is, you know, the property itself and the surrounding area, you know, clearly, the density would exceed fairly significantly the density of the surrounding area. So it's not a scenario where we sometimes see where an additional unit would actually be more in keeping with the neighborhood. It is mostly single-family homes. There are two families and condexes in the area as well, but you don't really see threes, much less another detached third unit. So that's where I struggle. On the other hand, it has been there for so very long, and seemingly, without objection on the part of the neighbors, there weren't complaints, nobody called, that we are aware of code enforcement complaining about an illegal additional unit, it seems to have fit in. And so while I struggle on the one hand and finding support on the other hand, I struggle to see how, you know, justice would be done by requiring that this unit be removed, and I echo the comments that we've heard previously. Of course, it has to meet all life safety requirements. That's not for us to decide, but I'm confident that the city would.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Ms. Lionel.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owners Alex and Teresa Park, address 65 Underhill Street, Sheet 14, Lot 466, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum land area 8,182 square feet existing, 18,669 square feet required to maintain a dwelling unit above the detached garage. This is in the RV Zone Ward 7. The board believes, finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. The, given the special condition of the property is that this unit above the garage has been used as an apartment, an illegal apartment, for many, many years, but it has been used as an apartment. And the applicant's proposed to bring this up to code and make it a functioning, legal apartment. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than variance. The board believes that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We don't believe that it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We find that it is not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served. So make a motion to approve this area variance.
Seconded by Mr. Neely. Any discussion? Mr. Neely, how do you vote?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
And Mr. Boucher votes in favor. Congratulations, your application's been approved. Just be aware, again, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Other than that, have a great night. If you have any questions, feel free to call the planning board. With that, I'll close the case. I'll close the public meeting for case number two, and I will open the public hearing for case number three. Case number three, 512 Amherst Street, LLC owner, Outfront Media LLC applicant, 512 Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot 571, requesting the following variances. One, from the land use code Section 190-103, Table 103-10, to allow an electronic message center, billboard, where that type of sign is not permitted in the GB zone. Two, from land use code Section 190-97, Section B subsection 1, to allow electronic message center to exceed 50% of the size of the sign, 100% proposed. Three, from land use code Section 190-97, Section B subsection 2, to allow graphics, symbols, and images, only three lines of text permitted. And four, from land use code Section 190-110, Section D, to exceed maximum size of billboard, 250 square feet allowed, 378 square feet proposed. I'll request to replace an existing static billboard with an electronic message center billboard in the same locations in the GB zone, Ward 1. Welcome. Just give us your name and address, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Philip Hastings. I'm an attorney with Cleveland Waters and Bass. I represent the applicant, Outfront Media. I have Jared Allen and Jenna Pinto with me from Outfront Media. I'd like to turn it over to Jenna to give a brief presentation of the sign itself, where it's located, and then I'll return and talk about the variance standards.
Thank you. Any interest, your name and address, please? Or business address?
Jenna Pinto, Office 40 Water Street, Boston. I live at 4 Emmett Street, Boston. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is Jenna Pinto, and as Phil mentioned, Jerry Allen, we represent the applicant, Outfront Media. We are proposing to update and replace an existing back-to-back static billboard at 512 Amherst Street with a back-to-back digital billboard. The owner of the property where the billboard is located, 512 Amherst Street LLC, Mr. Jeff Cole, has approved and supports the project. The height of the structure will remain the same at 35 feet. We are not doing any digging or anything to the existing pole. We are simply updating the faces to digital, and the size of the faces will only slightly increase from 10 feet by 35 feet to 10 feet 6 inches by 36 feet to align with industry's standard sizing. The building in operation will comply with all federal and state regulations. This billboard has been in the same spot since 1996, so for over 27 years. So it's nothing new. We have a long-term relationship, an agreement with the landlord, and the billboard will remain in place, but we feel we have an opportunity to improve it on a number of levels. It will improve visually. So the existing static signs have three large LED light bulbs on each side that currently reflect off the vinyl right now. Those six bulbs that already run 24/7 will be replaced by state-of-the-art LED lighting that adjusts to ambient light that will resolve flash glare. Each advertisement will last 10 seconds and will change instantly. There's no flashing, no animation. In addition to the external light fixtures being removed, the catwalks and aprons, these big metal things on the bottom, will also be removed, giving the billboard a cleaner appearance, which we think aligns with the citywide effort to enhance the aesthetics of the city, as listed in the bylaws. The update will also improve the function and utility of the billboard. Digitals allow for multiple messages and can therefore allow for things like community messages, public service announcements, and safety notifications such as emergency and amber alerts, which help to enhance safety. We put up content for missing persons before on other digitals. It could also be a great tool, whether the city is hiring police officers, or there are community events, or the local high school team wins a championship, so kind of anything across the board. Digitals are also a cost-effective solution for local small businesses and organizations to promote their offerings to the community. We work with a number of local Nashua businesses, to name a few. City and Nashville Health Department, who we received a letter of support from, Nashville Community College, Milliard Bank, and St. Joseph's Hospital. 70% of the Outfront business in New Hampshire is local, but digitals also provide advertising at a price point where more smaller local businesses can gain exposure to the community as well. Advertising is fundamental and key to the development of business, and I think something like this would really help to enhance business in the area. And I know that's a big focus for the city. I know earlier in August, Nashua was, I think, was one out of, or one of eight cities to be selected for a national grant program to help fund local small businesses, and Outfront's always trying to become better community partners, and I think this would help. The area where the billboard is located is very business commercial in nature, and this roadway has other signs and digital signs. So updating an existing sign in this area will not alter the character of the business district where it's located. So all in all, the digital signs will look a lot better and provide much more function and utility than the existing signs that are there. We feel it will enhance the aesthetic of the city while retaining the city's ability to attract and encourage economic development and growth. And happy to answer any questions when we're done with our presentation, but I'll turn back over to Philip Hastings.
Thank you, Jenna. So because the sign is located in the GB district, and it's an outdoor advertising sign, there are four specific variances that are required here. One is a variance to allow an electronic message center on an outdoor advertising sign in the general business district. The next two are fairly technical requirements. One is a variance to allow changing copy in excess of 50%. in excess of 50% of the sign area. We also need a variance to allow changing copy with more than three lines of text or images. And then finally, we're asking for a variance to allow the replacement of a lawfully nonconforming sign having a sign area of 378 feet. The existing sign has 350 square feet of sign area, and 250 square foot would be allowed per the terms of the ordinance. The request, we believe, satisfies all of the legal elements for granting a variance. You have before you a statement of facts and law that hit on those elements. I won't touch on those entirely, but I'm happy to answer any questions about them. I would like to hit some of the highlights of that. You also have a site plan showing the location of the sign. As Jenna mentioned, this is not changing. The height of the sign, the location of the sign, all will be in the same place. There are construction drawings showing that this will be designed safely. You also have some renderings and photographs in your package that really put the sign in the context of a very busy cluttered, in terms of sign components, area. So hitting the five requirements for granting a variance. One is that this variance will not be contrary to the public interest. This is not a new sign. It replaces an existing sign that's been on the site for, as Jenna said, almost three decades. It represents an improvement in both appearance and functionality. It's consistent with the use of the property and the character of the area, and there's no threat to public health or safety. In fact, it will be an improvement in those regards because of the reduction in glare and the additional benefits it may provide to the community. With respect to whether the variance is in the spirit of the ordinance, similarly, the new sign will improve the visual impact on the community relative to the existing sign. It will improve public safety by reducing the glare. It will provide opportunities for better public communications, notices, amber alerts, those types of communications, and provide a cost-effective means of advertising for local businesses that doesn't presently exist. So for those reasons, we believe the variance is in the spirit of the ordinance. The third prong, whether the variance represents a substantial justice. There's no harm to the public in granting this variance, but the applicant will be harmed by the inability to replace a somewhat outdated billboard into a modern, effective, and efficient one. The fourth element is whether the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. As I've stated, the property is in a busy, commercial area with multiple outdoor signs, both on-building signs, pylon signs, billboard signs. The new sign will be an improvement over the existing sign, and it will enhance the value of the neighboring properties. And finally, not granting the variance will result in an unnecessary hardship. The proposed sign is in all respects reasonable. It replaces an existing aged sign. It's consistent with the use of the property. It will not alter the essential character of the area. There's no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the specific restrictions at issue here. Replacing the sign as proposed will provide numerous public and private benefits. Not granting the variance will result in keeping, again, a somewhat outdated, older, lawfully nonconforming sign. The replacement will improve the aesthetics of the area generally. It will be safer than the existing sign, and it will provide a number of public and private benefits to the community. So for those reasons, we'd ask for your support of these four variances. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Lionel.
Are you aware of any other electronic message center billboards in the city of Nashua?
Jenna, can you speak to that?
There are not. Yes, I, that's true. Okay. In your application, you showed pictures of several EMCs along Amherst Street. Do any of them, other than the one at Nashville Community College, which is a state thing and not subject to city regulations, have anything other than three lines of text?
There's like, eh, graphics on top of three lines of text. Is that?
We, we get a lot of applications for EMCs, not electronic billboards, with graphics and, and we've been saying that if businesses want those, they should petition the Board of Alderman to change the ordinances, because the ordinances are very clear about what the rules are for EMCs. And in particular, for billboards, which this is a billboard, this is not the typical kind of EMC. EMC-type billboards are not allowed anywhere in the city, not just in this, in this zone, but anywhere. They are asking for four variances, so that's what we call is a big ask. And I'm very much struggling to see why, how, I don't believe this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, because the ordinance is very, very clear. It's not just a small stretch of the ordinance, but it's a very, very big stretch. I, I do not find support for this.
If I may, the distinction here is that there is an existing billboard sign. I understand your ordinance generally disfavors new electronic messaging billboards. It generally disfavors billboards.
Yeah, I was reading the ordinances. The ordinances do allow billboards in some of the city zones, and they disallow electronic billboards anywhere.
The difference here is we're not proposing a new billboard or a new sign.
Doesn't matter.
We're proposing a replacement of an existing sign in a manner and method that does represent an improvement.
Doesn't matter. That's all I have.
Mr. Neely.
Thank you for the very thorough packet. I do appreciate that. I was not able to find in there, with the current sign, what's the illumination level? And I assume that's measured lumens, and what's the new sign going to be at?
I don't have exactly what the existing bulbs are. I know our digitals are under .3 lumens, which I know based on several studies, including Federal Highway Administration studies, it's well below the established safety threshold.
And why the 10 seconds per ad? Like, why is that the magic number?
So that's typically the industry standard, and that's what we use on all of our boards across the country. I also think that might be somewhat listed federally that that's a safe amount of time for something instead of changing rapidly.
Okay.
And that is in compliance with your, essentially, board standards. Your ordinance does not want rapid and changing copy.
It says five seconds, yes.
Concerns. We are, to that permission.
Yeah, I was just, I was curious. I will tell you, I drive that road six, minimum six days a week, and I know that same exact spot. I know the traffic. That's, that's changing lanes right there. I've seen some nasty accidents, and I also used to commute to Boston a lot, so I saw your signs changing every 10 seconds in Somerville, you know, right over 93 is sitting in traffic. So I do have some good, good comparisons. I just, I was wondering why 10 was the magic number. So, thank you.
Anybody on Zoom? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any?
Jay or Scott, do you have questions?
Oh, do they have questions? That's all I was checking. No, okay. Does anybody in the audience have, would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? None? Nobody on Zoom? All right, we have a letter from Bobby Daigle, the Director of Public Health and Community Services. I won't read the whole letter into record, but they feel that, that they're in support of promoting messaging for the, for the benefit of the public. Put it, to kind of put that in a snapshot. Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely.
As I stated a few minutes ago, I drive this road six days a week. Since we first saw this application, I took an opportunity every day to look at the EMC signs that these folks also put in the packet, and noted that, with the exception of NCC, that they are primarily in compliance with the three lines of text. That intersection, so you've got Duham right there, you've got State, and I forget the other name of the road there. There's quite a bit of traffic of folks who are cutting lanes, especially as they get ready to turn onto Duham or State with the Amazon facility there with Flex. I will be quite honest, I find electronic billboards very distracting. 10 seconds, you know, every 10 seconds is, like it or not, human nature's going to want to see what the next, the next slide is going to be. It's in a very, very effective medium. The reason I asked about the illumination levels, we have a brand-new development going in there with, it looks like 31 or 32 homes, 31 new homes, and you have four right around the corner there. You get a nice rainy night, and all those folks are going to have a lot of flashing lights outside of their brand-new homes, and I'm not sure that's, that's, that's what they signed up for when they, they started building these homes. It is not consistent with what we have in Nashua. I certainly was trying to picture electronic billboards on the rest of Amherst Street. I can't do it. I mean, it's already pretty crowded with smaller EMC signs. I don't personally see any reason to allow any of these variances, so I am not in favor of this application.
Thank you. Ms. Lionel.
Well, I pretty much already said my bit, and I agree with Mr. Neely that this is not consistent with the city and that particular location. I think that a changing electronic message board would be a hazard. I'm unmoved by all of the glowing suggestions as to what use it could be put to. And again, I would, you know, say that it's not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance for, especially considering there's four different variances they're requiring, they're requesting here. That's evidence that it's not. So I'm not in support.
Also, I'm not in support for the reasons spoken to. That billboard has been there for a long time, as has been testified. I believe from the questions I asked about this research I did, that this billboard wasn't approved structure at one time, and I believe the ordinance has changed. That, you know, obviously, doing anything to that billboard at this point would, this is why all these nonconformances. The use of the billboard is still there. We're not, there's not any harm being done. We're not taking away anything. There's no taking of the rights to use the billboard. So I, again, because, you know, of the reasons spoken to, I'm not going to be able to support this application. Mr. McCarren.
I actually have no problem with signage such as the ones, you know, the one that's proposed. I think electronic signage of this type can be attractive, and I definitely think it is the way modern billboard signage is going. That said, it's not for me to put my judgment or my preferences in the place of our legislative body, the Board of Alderman. I think granting this request is tantamount to rezoning, and for those reasons, I can't find support.
Thank you. Ms. Boris.
I'm also not in support of the application based on everything that's been already stated.
Thank you. Anybody like to make a motion?
You ready to do it?
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to not approve the variance for 512 Amherst Street LLC owner, Outfront Media LLC applicant, 512 Amherst Street, Sheet H, Lot 571, requesting the following variances. And this is a motion to not approve all of these variances. One, from Land Use Code 190-103, Table 103-10, to allow an electronic message center billboard where that type of sign is not permitted in the GB zone. Second, from Land Use Code 190-97, subsection Bravo, subsection 1, to allow electronic message center to exceed 50% of the size of the sign with 100% proposed. Number three, from Land Use Code Section 190-97, subsection B subsection 2, to allow graphics, symbols, and images, only three lines of text permitted. And number four, from Land Use Code Section 190-110, subsection D, to exceed maximum size of billboard, 250 square feet allowed, 378 square feet proposed. I'll request to replace an existing static billboard with an electronic message center billboard in the same location in the GB zone, Ward 1. The Board finds that this variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. We find that there is no special conditions of the property. This billboard in place is still usable. The new billboard is out of character with the neighborhood and will potentially cause safety issues on Amherst Street. In addition, cause some noise, excuse me, some light issues with a brand-new housing development going up basically right next to it. In addition, the Board has stated that since there is no similar billboards in the Nashua area, that we do not see the reason to offer these specific variances as this, this location is grandfathered in previous to the current regulations. We found that the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. This is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It is contrary to popular interest, and substantial justice is not served. So for those reasons, this motion is to not approve the four variances.
Second.
Any discussion? We, just, just a point of discussion, just minor. There is, there was no, there was no testimony about property values either way. I, I would, I'm just going to state that I'm still going to vote to deny, but I just want to state in my fact that I'm not looking at that as a reason why I would deny this application.
And thank you, and for those reasons, I will retract that statement about property values. So we have no testimony that the property values will be adversely affected.
I'll approve that change.
Okay, thank you. All right, Laurel, Mr. Neely?
Mr. Neely votes in favor of the motion to deny the variances.
Ms. Lionel.
Mr. Lionel votes in favor of the motion to deny.
And Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the motion to deny. Sorry, application's been denied. There is a 30-day window of appeal, so feel free to call the planning department if you want to pursue that. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Thanks for coming. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number three, and we'll open the public hearing for case number four.
We need to do a Fisher v. Dover first, don't we?
Well, just wait. Mr., Mr. Fock, Ms. Lionel had a question about Fisher v. Dover. Mr. Fock, Ms. Lionel had a question about Fisher v. Dover.
The applicant can describe that, we originally thought perhaps he shouldn't mention it, but he thought he covered it in his cover letter to our staff. Their counsel may want to touch on that.
Hi, good evening, Board members.
So if you just want to address that, and then, so, and then I'll read in the case, I'll read in the case after that if we decide to move forward.
Okay.
Okay?
My name's Chris Swinyarsky, I'm an attorney from Divine Millimet, representing Sam Katz, who is the owner of Thirty-Six Granite Street. With respect to the Fisher v. Dover doctrine, which is basically a doctrine that prevents the Board from having to relitigate the same findings of fact, really the gist of that is that the Board should not be hearing repetitive applications. The issue that was brought to my attention is that this particular property and this applicant applied for a variance in 2005 seeking a front yard or depth setback and a frontage setback in connection with a proposal to subdivide the property into two lots. The application before you tonight is not for subdividing the two lots, we are not seeking either of those forms of relief. There's really nothing the same between the two applications, so the Fisher v. Dover doctrine is not implicated at all in this case.
Yeah, I'm not in agreement with that, I mean, to me, the, what's, the the end result is going to be two homes on this property with access through the currently paper road of Davis, the end of Davis Court. That it's being done as asking for a second structure on the lot versus subdividing into two lots doesn't really change that for me, that's kind of a minor, minor point. So I would think that this fails the Fisher v. Dover test.
Mr. Neely, do you have any comments on that?
I'm undecided on that, I'd like to hear the rest of the discussion.
Mr. McCarran, do you have any comments?
I do agree that the net effect is the ability to build a second home on the property. But I do think that in the prior case, it was a variance for the lot dimensions, for the frontage in particular, or I think it was also the depth. And in this case, it's two structures on the same property, so although I am on the fence, and I think it's close to the line, I would lean towards hearing the case.
Thank you. Ms. Boris, any comments?
I have no comment.
I also have the same sentiments that Mr. McCarran has. I think it's very close for me, but I think there's just enough that I would side on hearing the case. So so in this case, we would usually take a vote, right? I don't have the the Fisher v. Dover paperwork here.
Mr. Chair, that would be a motion whether or not the request is substantially different than previous, or that the neighborhood is substantially changed.
So a motion has to be made. So a motion would have to be made on any of one of those. Does anybody want to make a motion for either approval or denial?
I'll withdraw my objection if that will do it.
So, yeah, the only other thing that would happen here, right, is that because there's only three voting members, if there was a motion made to approve, there's only two, and you would deny, let's just say, and then we have to go back and see if we can get an approval to denial, which we then passed, and that would have to be continued, right?
Well, let's just go ahead and do the Fisher v. Dover thing.
Just so I don't want to make sure that you're not feeling pressured.
No, 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 that's all right.
So I'll make a motion that, help me out again, sorry for the wording.
You could just make a motion, just a suggestion, that you believe that the case does meet any of the Fisher versus Dover requirements, and that you would allow the case to go forward as submitted.
So I make a motion that this meets the Fisher v. Dover criteria, and I'd like to move forward with the case. Anybody second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, any good discussion? Mr. Neely?
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Lionel?
Mr. Lionel votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor. So I'm going to read the case for and to the record. This is for Sam Katz, owner of Thirty-Six Granite Street, Sheet Forty-four, Lot Thirty-seven, requesting a variance from land use code, section 190, Seventeen, section B, to allow two principal structures on one lot where only one is permitted, it's in the IB zone, Ward three. Again, welcome again, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Board members, now that we got that out of the way. And we have discussed in that brief conversation a little bit about what we're proposing. This property at Thirty-Six Granite Street has a current single-family home. What we're proposing is a second single-family structure, which requires a variance from section 190 Seventeen B to allow a second principal structure. I am a big believer in the idea that a picture is worth a thousand words, and that's why I included some in my application. Probably the first one to look at, it would be at Tab seven, and I don't know if we can put that, thank you. So that's the city's GIS map with a satellite image overlay of this area. And in yellow, the subject property is highlighted. So what you can see from that is that this particular parcel is significantly larger than most of the parcels in the area. There are some other large ones as well, like the one right behind it, significantly larger than the one next to it. Pretty similar to the one right next to it. As you move out to other butters, it's quite a bit larger, yet it does not cover the lot nearly as much. If you look up and down Davis Court, most of those properties completely cover their parcel, whereas this one does not. It's also pretty unique because it has access from two different streets. You have Granite Street at the front of the current residence, but you also have Davis Court accessing, or providing access to this parcel at the rear. That is a public street. It's not actually a paper street, it's a public street. The right-hand turn of that is currently unpaved, but it is nonetheless a public street that the public has the right to use, can't be closed off, et cetera. So these two things make this a very unique parcel, and it's not really developed in the way that most of the surrounding area is. And that sort of is the basis for what my client wants to do, which happens to also provide housing, which is a significant problem not just in Nashua, but in most of America today. It is actually a really good proposal to do that. Otherwise, these two structures will comply with all of the dimensional regulations of the city zoning ordinance. So the only variance that we need is for the second principal structure. With that, I'd like to run through the legal variance criteria, unless any Board members have any specific questions about the facts of the application before we do that. Is there anything I can answer, or that Chad Brandon, who's the project engineer, can answer?
There might be some, but you can continue.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that?
There might be some, but right now there's none.
Okay, sure. So in granting a variance, I'm sure the Board is familiar with the five legal criteria. Generally, the guidance from the Supreme Court is that Criteria one and two are taken together, and that's because they are very similar. Criteria one is whether granting the variance will be contrary to the public interest. Criteria two is whether or not the spirit of the ordinance will be observed. Now, obviously, the spirit of the ordinance is to preserve the public interest, so it makes sense that those two are read together. The guiding rule on that in determining whether or not a variance is contrary to the public interest is whether or not granting it unduly and in a marked degree conflicts with the ordinance's basic zoning objectives. And those are the words of our Supreme Court. So that's really the way we have to determine those two criteria. And additional criteria is whether or not granting, excuse me, the variance would alter the essential character of the locality. And that's why I was discussing what is happening in the area surrounding this property. So, you know, when you look at what we're proposing, the character of the surrounding area, and you think about other primary zoning objectives of the ordinance, health and safety, things like that, it's really hard to articulate how this proposal can unduly and in a marked degree conflict with those objectives. This doesn't generate significant traffic, it's simply one single-family structure. There aren't really any safety issues, you have multifamily use all over this area, and it generally doesn't really provide any significant change to the neighborhood. The neighborhood largely remains the same, this brings this one property more into conformity with the neighborhood. The third criteria is whether or not substantial justice would be done. Now, the guidance from our Supreme Court on that criteria is a balancing. You weigh the detriment to the applicant in not having the variance versus the benefit to the public in having the ordinance strictly enforced. Now, the detriment to the applicant is that the applicant has this unique property and cannot fully utilize it the way that most other properties in the area are utilized. That also happens to be somewhat of a detriment to the city, to the extent that this will provide additional housing stock. Granted, it's only one unit, but there was a time when housing was built one unit at a time, it's been a while since we've seen that. Conversely, when you're considering the impact on the community, it's really hard to see what negative impact or what benefit there is to the community in strictly upholding the ordinance and not granting this variance. There were some people who submitted emails and testimony that, you know, they object to this, and I understand that. And most of that had to do with not wanting to see something built on land that is now grass, a yard. I get that, you know, as a land use lawyer, I hear that a lot, I sit on the boards in my town. But that's not really a valid reason to prevent something. Nobody has the right to prevent their neighbor or another property owner from developing their land simply because they like seeing it empty. You know, I live in a subdivision with sixty homes, it used to be a farm. Yes, it would be lovely if it was still a farm, but that's not how the law works. So it is really hard on that criteria to find how the purported benefit to the public in upholding the ordinance and denying the variance outweighs what happens to the applicant in not granting the variance, which once again is the inability to utilize the property to the extent most of the rest of the neighborhood utilizes their property. The fourth criteria under our state law is whether or not the values of surrounding properties will be diminished. Generally, when a new home, or a new structure even, is built in an area where the other homes are not new, and it's a comparable type of structure, that will be of significantly higher value. When there's higher value, it tends to raise up the value of its surrounding properties, that's how appraisals work. I have heard some of the residents who had submissions saying that their property values were, would be diminished, although I didn't see anything explaining why. Conversely, we submitted a letter from a realtor who's been licensed in both New Hampshire and Massachusetts for more than thirty years, and it's her professional opinion that this would not diminish any surrounding property values, quite the opposite, it would enhance those values. So when we're looking at these criteria, we always have to weigh the evidence. You know, on the one hand, we have some statements of opinion by what I think are laypersons, but the Board, you know, will determine that in due course as this proceeding goes on. And then we have a written statement that we provided from a credible expert witness. So it is up to the Board to decide which one of those it relies upon in making its decision on that criteria. And then the fifth criteria, which I'm pretty sure is everybody's favorite always, is that, is whether or not special conditions exist such that literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship. And we've sort of touched upon this already in the discussion. The property has special conditions. It is significantly larger and significantly less developed than the rest of the properties in the neighborhood. But also, it is one of the only properties, at least in the immediate area, that has access from two public streets. So those two things make it very unique. And when you combine those two things, the size and the access, it is a hardship to not be able to use the remainder of the property for anything more than grass or a yard when everything else in the area is so much more densely developed. And if you, you know, if you look at that Tab seven again, you'll see that we have dense development in this area, that should come as no surprise to anyone on the Board. In fact, I think on Davis Court, there's a four-unit condominium. So again, this really, and that touches upon one of the other sub-criteria of this, is whether or not the proposed use is a reasonable one. I think we can say it's reasonable because it really is very similar to the uses that exist in the neighborhood already. So I think with those five criteria, we pretty easily meet those criteria and have demonstrated with credible evidence that we do. But with that, I would open it up to the Board for any other specific questions you may have about our proposal or about my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Neely?
Thank you for the very in-depth packet, we do appreciate that, I have a couple of questions for you. So why is this being structured as a condominium instead of just subdividing the lot and having two single-family properties?
I think condominium works better in this neighborhood, you already have one in the area, and that allows shared resources of the land.
And Thirty-Six Granite Street, is this a single-family home currently, or is this a multifamily home?
I'm pretty sure it's a single-family, Chad, do you know? It is a single-family.
Okay. And was any thought put into maybe just building onto this current building? When you take a look at the map, you can see that the home itself is smaller than many of the other buildings around it. Why not just build on the back of it, make it a condo, you wouldn't be dealing with all this neighborhood opposition?
Well, it really is our opinion from a design perspective that that is almost an end run around having to get a variance, and it doesn't utilize the property. So yes, you could build up, make a two-family, but what we have here, our uniqueness, is the larger lot and the additional public access. So doing that is definitely a possibility, but it's a worse result for everybody, including the community. I mean, you really, here you have an opportunity to create two housing units that share a very large lot and sort of have their own curtilage, whereas a two-family house is something totally different, where the two units are actually sharing walls.
Any consideration to not using the Davis Court paper street and instead just making one long driveway back to the second house if you subdivide it?
Well, yeah, we have looked at that, and that's a possibility, but again, it's not the best use of the land. And Davis Court is a public street there, so when we thought about it, we said there's really no good reason to do that, that we could think of at least.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Lionel?
If this were to be granted, who would be responsible and pay for turning that part of Davis Court into something that's usable?
The applicant would handle that.
And have you or the applicant discussed this with the city public works department, et cetera? They would be, they would need their buy-in on it for snow removal, and the fire department would be interested to know whether they would be able to get into there?
Sure. We haven't yet because this is the first step, and to do a condominium, we also require a planning board approval, and those discussions and details are always handled at the planning board level, so we thought that that would be premature at this point. But we understand the concern, and we're willing to address and deal with it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any members on Zoom have their hand raised? Mr. McCarron?
So would the intent be to bring that section of Davis Court, that stub, up to a Class V road standard?
Doubtful because that really isn't necessary. It, that particular stub only touches two properties, and I believe, I know for a fact that at least one property is already using it. The second property, I'm not sure, the second property being the subject property, but there's no intent to bring it up to a Class V standard. If that is something the city was very interested in, we could discuss it, but my initial thought would be that that's not something the city's interested in either. It's additional resources from the city for really only two taxpayers, so we thought that that wouldn't be well-received by the city. Or practical, for that matter.
Mr. Falk?
Actually, it touches four properties, six Davis Court, and three on Granite Street.
Thank you. Anybody else with a raised hand, members? Any other questions before I move on? Okay, we're all set for now. We're all set for now.
Okay.
I'm sure you'll be back up.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, with that, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? All right, come on up, just give us your name and address. You'll have five minutes.
Linda Willett for Davis Court. Apologies for getting my letter in late. I wasn't one of the notified abutters and didn't realize that it was to be in yesterday. I'm also speaking for Patricia Thurber, my neighbor at two Davis Court, who co-signed the letter. With regard to the variance, the first requirement, the variance will not be contrary to public interest. And this states that, the developer states that this is, this development would be consistent with the other multi-unit residential developments of the neighborhood and results in no detriment to the public safety. Actually, the development of the neighborhood does not reflect building in the backyards while there are multi-unit houses in the area. They're about an equal number, I think, if you look at the ones surrounding on Granite Street, equal number of multi-use and single-family. And they developed pretty much in the 19th and early 20th century, the multi-use units. They were additional units allowed in existing buildings, not building in the backyard. The variance will really be contrary to the public interest in that the... I'm wanting to speak, but getting out of order here with what's required. There will not be substantial justice done with this. Davis Court is a small enclave in the inner city, really, that has managed to survive for a long time, although it runs off Majorody, Concord Street. It's a dead-end street, which results in a lot of turning around in our driveways, especially now trucks with all the deliveries. There's no real allowed turnaround except at the end of the street, the dog leg. But pretty much everyone realizes they've made a mistake or have completed their delivery and picks one of our driveways. The street is only paved to a width of 22 feet, which is quite narrow. There are no sidewalks. So if there are cars parked on the street, it's difficult to navigate. The spirit of the ordinance would be broken because we've been here twice before about allowing development on this backyard, and the developer wasn't able to meet the 40, 50-foot frontage on Davis Court. And under this proposal, that would circumvent the frontage requirement on Davis Court. It stated that the building will front on Davis Court, and even if the street was developed to the usual 40 feet, it'd only be 40 feet and not the 50 feet that's required. So it was previously denied to allow a narrower frontage, and this would go around that. In essence, I think the city land would be used to provide a private driveway into the property. The city, where's the snow going to go? Where are the services coming from? It would become a driveway. And it just doesn't seem fair that that would be allowed to happen. It's difficult to live in the inner city now in spite of the need for more housing. That's my time. In spite of the need for more housing, it must be seen that these dense neighborhoods are really difficult to maintain at a high level. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Come on up, give us your name and address, please.
I don't have a lot to say. Catherine Cogswell, 32...
Sorry, ma'am, the mic, because we need to pick it up.
32 Granite Street. I too have a big backyard that's accessible from Granite Street and Davis Court, and I love my backyard. And just because you can put something out there doesn't mean you should. And that's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
Hi, my name's Michael Anisi. Me and my girlfriend, Tyra and Berger, we live at six Davis Court, and we've lived there for a little over two years now. And I know that the, I submitted an email, so I mean, I kind of just deal with the same thing that I've said before, but the whole point of like the street, you know, we found the house, we saw it was on a dead end. I mean, it's not very common to find a dead-end street. That's kind of the appeal of the house, to have that dead-end neighborhood, and it's quite small and quiet. And that wooded area kind of provides that little separation of our small street from kind of the rest of everything else, and it keeps it in that small character. And like some of the others have said, it's a very small and narrow street. It, to me, doesn't seem to make much sense to put another home at the end of it. I'll just pull up my email so that I can speak here. Do I wish to print it out? Oh, thank you. So as the last person had already said, it doesn't seem to make much sense that it's a hardship to have a backyard. I mean, that's kind of, because it's an inner-city area, most people don't really have that kind of space. Like, for us specifically, we have a pretty small backyard, would love to have more space, but we just, we don't. It doesn't really seem to make much sense that it's a hardship to have a backyard. If anything, I feel like that'd be more valuable because it's not really, not really a thing most people have in the area. And again, with like, with certain things like snow removal and turnaround, I can't really see anywhere for it to go. I mean, it's such a narrow street. I mean, is it going to push into the yard of somebody else, push through the trees, knock it like, oh, I don't really, it doesn't seem to make much sense to me. And also, with all of that there, there would have to be the removal of the trees because it's quite dense in that little area. And there'd be tree removal, and that's right next to our property there. I, there would be a lot of congestion in that area for us because obviously with the house, if the house were to be built there, that would mean that there is pretty much construction vehicles on our street at all times, all to be done. And I don't, I just don't see how it would fit in with the character of the area, really. For me personally, I feel like it would, I don't agree that it would boost the value of homes on the street because that's the whole draw of the street, is it's a small street with, you know, older-looking, you know, homes. And I just, I don't, I don't see how that would fit in personally for us on the street. And I don't really see how it would be a hardship to not have a home built there. So I guess that's really all I have to say. Everything, of course, is in that email that I had already sent, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
That was everybody.
Anybody on Zoom? We have some letters. We have some letters in opposition to the application. And again, I won't read them all to the record, but I'll give you who they're from. Cliff and Tara Oznisky at 31 Granite Street. Michael Anisi just spoke, and also a letter was signed by Kylie Borger. Sorry if I mispronounced that. Elizabeth Wilson of 38 Granite Street. And Catherine Cogswell of 32 Granite Street. I don't think I'm missing anything else. Those are all the folks that had sent in communications regarding some type of opposition to the application. Okay, with that, sir, you'll have five minutes to come up.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I won't take five minutes, I promise. Largely, a lot of the things that I heard are sort of the same thing I was saying. What I would point out, a couple of things, it is a dead-end street. We're not proposing to change that. It will still remain a dead-end street. We don't have any right to run the public street through anything and connect it to anything else. The discussion about snow removal, things like that, we would be addressing that. That sounds terrible, I sound better than this. And there would also be a stormwater analysis, all as part of the planning board review of this, so we're aware of those situations, and we're happy to address them. They're not really within the scope of the variance application, though, but we're fully prepared to address those at the appropriate time. And then, you know, the last thing I would address would, the idea that having a yard is not a hardship, that's a matter of preference, but what we're talking about for our hardship is the inability to utilize land in the same way that many, many properties in the city of Nashua and in this area are utilizing it. So that's the hardship we're talking about. We're not saying that it's hard for us to have a yard. Clearly, a yard is a nice thing. Our hardship is in the utilization of the land to have additional housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? No, I think we're all set. I don't see any raised hands.
Okay.
Yes. Those who spoke in opposition, if only one person, if you choose so, can come up and have another five minutes to rebut anything that the applicant said, if he had anything to add, that's really up to you. Come on up, ma'am. Again, you'll have five minutes, and just give us your name and address, please.
So the utilization is...
Just your name and address for the record.
Linda Willett for Davis Court.
Okay, thank you.
The utilization translates to financial hardship. This is an investment property, it's not someone's home, and the goal here is to make money. And I think the question of, is the driveway and the plowing and the street, no sidewalks, plows have to back down the street, trash trucks have to back down the street. The city, I wouldn't think, would be in the business of providing a driveway into this property. And again, the question of the frontage, as stated, it would be, the building would front on Davis Court. If there's not an improved Davis Court there, then is there also not improved frontage even at a reduction in what the zoning requires? Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing, open a public meeting. Mr. Lionel?
I disagree that this is, the proposed use is consistent with the neighborhood. Yes, there are multifamily units in the neighborhood. This is more or less my neighborhood, but they don't consist of multiple buildings, multiple separate buildings on the same lot. So I'm not convinced by that particular argument. This is a very small street, and as has been noted, the dog leg is, has not been built out as a street. I can't really find support for this. The fact that they would like to build a second house on it without meeting the requirements that were tried before of subdividing it into two lots, to me, this sort of feels like an end-runaround the ordinances in that regard. So I'm not in support.
The reason I had asked about why go with the condominium was just because I was trying to get a better feel for the neighborhood, and I think that we have certainly seen in the past, folks, when they start talking about condominiums, it's all about avoiding the setbacks, kind of doing an end-around, for lack of a better terminology. If the board remembers, one of my questions also was, have these folks considered just enlarging that building? You know, I asked if it was a single-family house, it is. As I look through the applicant's packet, I can see that 38 Granite, 35 Granite, 34 Granite, 29 Granite, 28 Granite, and 31 Concord have all figured out how to make multiple units in a single building without putting additional buildings on their property. I quite frankly think it'd be very easy to build onto this building. We would not be here looking for a zoning variance. They still have a good-sized yard, there'd be no neighbor opposition. I'll tell you, one of the cool things of this job is sometimes you end up in neighborhoods you never would have found, and Davis Court is one of those neighborhoods. I had no idea that existed, and that was really, you know, a fun little few minutes I spent down Davis Court, very neat neighborhood. I do think that this will change the character of that neighborhood, although I did not realize that one Davis Court is already divided into four condos, so that was very interesting to see that information. That being said, you know, I'd love to hear what the rest of the board says. I'm leaning toward, excuse me, leaning against this variance, but I'd like to hear what the rest of the discussion is.
Mr. McCarron.
I, I agree with your comments that Mr. Neely made. You know, end of the day, do I think putting two units on that property is problematic? No. Can I see a logic to why they want to create two single-family homes? Yes. But they can legally, if I'm correct, put a duplex on that property, which is very consistent with what we see in the surrounding neighborhood. And I'm really not finding what it is about this property that really makes it that distinct. There, in terms of its size, it's larger than many in the neighborhood, but it actually has two abutting properties directly, abutters that are larger. It's not, you know, the, the degree to which it's larger than most in the neighborhood, I, I think is not that great. Also, there are many double-frontage lots in this neighborhood. If you look on Layton Street, Chaddock Street, Cross Street, a, a number of those because of the narrowness of the depth of those blocks they go through, so that doesn't make it distinct. And I am also concerned as to how, and maybe I'm going beyond my purview, putting a driveway in that street impacts the rights of the other three, you know, abutters to that street who also have rights of access. But again, that, maybe that's something that could have been decided at a different point, but for those reasons, I, I don't support the application.
Ms. Boris.
I'm actually struggling with this application and, I mean, based on what my colleagues also have stated and I would like to hear what my other colleagues have to say about it, but I am struggling with going forth and approving as submitted.
Thank you. I, I'm also not in favor for several of the reasons spoken to, again, not to repeat them, but I also believe that there is other method to achieve two-family consistent with the neighborhood. My thoughts and my personal thoughts on that 100 or 110 feet of, of paper street that would have to be accessed to get that, you know, that's not something that I've seen in my tenure. Again, every property is unique. I think that we have seen some applications where there is a very small incursion into a paper street that makes sense, but this, I'm having difficulty with this, but that is not the main reason why I'm not going to support the application. I, I believe that there's another way to do this, I, the more consistent. And again, there's no doubt that the lot, size of the lot is significant enough to, to have two dwellings there, so I, I think there's, there's another way to do this. So, with that, I'm not going to support the application. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Make a motion. Behalf of owner is Sam Katz, address 36 Granite Street, Sheet 44, Lot 37, requesting variance from land use code section 190-17B to allow two principal structures in one lot where only one is permitted. This is in the RV zone, Ward 3. The board believes that this variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. There are no special conditions of the property that would prevent the applicant from adding additional units without requiring the variance. The board believes this is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have varying testimony about whether it will affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We, the board believes this is contrary to public interest. Substantial justice to the applicant might be served, but on the whole, we don't find the points of law are met and therefore I make a motion to deny the area variance.
Seconded by Mr. Neely. Any discussion? Mr. Neely.
Mr. Neely votes in favor of the motion to deny the variance.
Mr. Lino.
Mr. Lino votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Boucher also votes in favor of the motion to deny. Sorry, your application's not been approved. Again, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Thank you for coming. Have a good night. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number four. So, so folks, we have some more business to attend to, so if you would just please be quiet on your way out, we would really appreciate it. Thank you. You have meeting minutes? Good night. We have meeting minutes from September 13th. Does anybody see any issues or changes or corrections I'd like to make?
Nope.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the September 13th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lino. Any discussion? None. Mr. Neely.
Mr. Neely votes in favor.
Mr. Lino.
Mr. Lino votes in favor.
And Mr. Boucher votes in favor. We have one case next, next meeting on October 1st at 54 Penachuck Street. I don't see any regional impact.
I do not.
Concur with that.
Okay, so no regional impact. The last item on the agenda, we all have gotten, received proposed 2024 meeting and deadline dates for next year. And obviously, we have some, does anybody see anything?
When is the election in November?
Only the folks here got it. I was going to email it to everyone else. This is just a preliminary, in a sense, for what it is.
So, we'll take a look at it and then we'll approve at a later meeting. Okay, all right, so we don't, there's no action taken, just a, is there any other business that you, that we need to go over? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I will close this meeting at the time of 8:27. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Have a good night.